Let's come to order. I'd like to welcome each one of you here today. If you would, if you have a cellphone, if you please put it on vibrate or turn it off, we'd certainly appreciate it. At this time, we'd stand for the invocation and pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of coming together today and to meet together as Walton County citizens. We ask that you will strengthen us and guide us in the decisions that we make as a board, that everything we do will be in the best interest of all the citizens of Walton County. We thank you, Lord, for those who serve us every day and put their lives on the line so that we may live as free Americans. Our policemen, our firemen, our military, both here in the United States and across the seas, we pray that you will bless them and their families and bring them home safely. And all these things we ask in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Demirz?
Mr. Chairman, before you approve the agenda, we have two additions and one deletion. For the additions under administration, item adding number 2F, Larry Jones, Special Projects Coordinator, with an easement for Chelco for the Mossy Head Industrial Park. Also, under the public hearings, the continued public hearing from last week, or earlier this week, no, it was last week, amended and restated final assessment for the fire fee resolution. And we have one deletion, under citizen's request, item number 2, which is Karen Meadows and Amy Stoils on the 30A 10K road race, ask you to delete that item.
Any questions?
Motion to approve the additions and deletions?
Second.
A motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your agenda.
The agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious. Now have a motion go.
Motion for the consent agenda approval? Second.
Okay, have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion curious.
Mr. Chairman, the first item is Public Works, Mr. Wilmer Stafford will present that item.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners, good morning Commissioners, Mr. Chair. We'd like to ask the Board to approve the request to award an invitation to bid 013-020, County Road 2, paved shoulders, phase 1 and 2, to APAC in the amount $3,267,918.10.
Any questions?
Is there going to be a phase 3?
Yes, sir, there will be. It's coming out, should go out this week, by the end of this week.
With the phase 3 coming?
This phase 1 and 2 is going from 1087 to Highway 83, eleven and a half miles of a widening overlay.
Would the anticipated cost for phase 3 and what you've got here, is that going to be within budget?
For the phase 3?
No, for phases 1 and 2.
Yes, sir. And this is, yeah, all federal money, yes, sir.
That's what I was going to ask you, this is all grant money?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't come out of ad政 taxes?
Federal grant, federal money distributed down through the DOT.
Great. Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next up, we have Larry Jones, Special Projects Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Demirz, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Going to take my items just a little out of order, if you don't mind. The first one is the US 331 corridor design and development standards. We have presented you a draft based on the criteria you approved a couple of months ago. Please keep in mind, this is a draft, and we are looking for your comments to be included as we move forward. Our next step will be to ask you to approve it with the changes that you see fit, and then we will ask for two public workshops to have the public included before we bring it back for final approval. So we're not looking for any action today, but just to ask you to present those back, preferably this week if you can, and we'll have them ready for the next meeting for your further discussion and consideration. If there's no questions on that, the next item is the approval of the easement for Chelco. In order for Chelco to work in our right of ways in the Mossy Head Industrial Park, we must grant them an easement. What we're asking is actually a little more than just the easement to the eastern side, that it's kind of a blanket easement that gives them, working with our Public Works, the availability of all of our right of way to construct their lines. So that was easement that was presented to you, and we request you, your approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
The next item, Commissioners, we had in your agenda packet somewhat of a placeholder anticipating a presentation for today, and we are prepared to move forward with that presentation. So with that, we'll introduce you to Love's Travel Stops and Country Stores. Some time back, some local citizens raised the idea that this may be a perfect fit for our Mossy Head Industrial Park. I believe somebody had a conversation with Mr. Bill Fletcher and Mac Work and Art Miller. And when I came on board, Mr. Enfield said he'd had some conversations with the folks at Love's and asked me to continue those conversations, and I was pleased to do that. And today, we're here to talk a little bit more about that and where we are. A little bit about Love's, they're a closely-held private organization based in Oklahoma. They have annual revenue of about $17 billion and over 10,000 employees. They've been in business for about 49, 45 years and sell close to 300 locations and I believe 39 or 40 states across the country. We're here today to talk about location based on this information, 291. Over the past several months, we've engaged some very productive conversations with Love's. Mr. Bill Gleason, Stacy Pippin are here today representing Love's, and last Friday I presented you with a, with a contract, an executive agreement from Love's for their desire to move into our Mossy Head Industrial Park, and it's today we're going to ask you for your approval of that. We'll ask that in just a moment, we've got just a couple of things we want to cover. This proposal will land about 80 jobs in the industrial park, about 50 of those will be full-time and 30 will be part-time. They project seven, several million dollars in annual diesel fuel sales, which will have a tremendous impact on the county's revenue. They project over 2 million gallons of annual gasoline sales and several million in their retail and restaurants. They intend to locate two nationally-franchised restaurants in this facility, preferably a Subway and a McDonald's, but as you can see, the others there are restaurants they work with as well. Love's commitment is to pay Walton County $500,000 for approximately 15 acres of land. They will pay to upgrade the cost of the internal road to their specifications from what the county would typically build. They will construct and operate the travel stop and country store facility. Their total investment will be about $6.5 million, and again, to bring the jobs. Walton County's commitment is to sell Love's 15 acres, to build the interior road to their specifications, to construct the master stormwater system, and to clear the site. The benefits to Walton County is, first of all, it's the initial tenant in this industrial park, which we believe will spur much greater interest as we move forward, to produce jobs for the county, and increase the annual fuel sales and property tax revenue into the county coffers. The parcel we're looking for, they're looking at is highlighted in yellow on that slide. It's immediately adjacent to State Road 285 and Interstate 10. That is just a very preliminary concept of what their facility will look like, with the retail and the gasoline sales on the, facing the Highway 285 and the truck amenities, fuel in, in the rear, so it's a separate operation. We have visited a couple of their locations, Commissioner Commander and I stopped at one in Cottondale, very pleasing, very family-oriented. You never know, you're at a truck stop, the way they build their facilities, so we're very excited today to ask you to approve moving this project forward by your affirmative vote on the contract as presented. Mr. Davis has reviewed it, he had a couple of comments that have been incorporated into it. As you can see, that it has been executed by Love's and it's, waits your approval. So I'm going to introduce Bill and Stacy, if they've got any comments, if you have any questions.
Thanks, ladies, appreciate that. Bill Gleason with Love's Travel Stops and Country Stores out of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. And we're just very excited about locating a new facility down here in Walton County. And I'll say that I've been very impressed with the preparations that the county's made out there at that facility. It made it, made it an attractive location for us. I can, you can definitely tell there's been years of work on, on the county's behalf to, to get that site ready for us to come in, and, and we came down and met with Larry and, and several other folks, and have been very pleased and very happy, and we just are excited about another location for Love's here in, in Florida. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve, but after, if I get a second, I've got a couple of other comments I'd like to make.
Second.
Mr. Jones, I want to thank you very much for the very hard work that you've put in and working with us and with Bill and with Love's. We truly are appreciative of what Love's can bring to the county and especially to the area in terms of jobs and economic growth, and we're very appreciative of that. There's a couple of companies that I think, I know you mentioned three individuals at the beginning, and all of those were important role players in this, but I also think that Preble Rish and Mossy Head Waterworks worked with us to get the necessary information to Love's in a timely fashion, and I'm appreciative of their efforts, too. So I have the motion to approve.
Could I add a comment to yours?
Ben, we're thanking people. I want to go back and thank the county commissioners in 2002, I believe it was, it was even before, you had three terms, it was started before you came on board. So it's been a vision of the, of past county commissioners and past staff to get this far today, and I, I'm just beyond excited, you know. So I want to thank all the former county commissioners and staff for the work they put in to make this happen as well.
Yeah, we, we look forward to having y'all as a partner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to put some effort into this. It was certainly a collective effort with a number of individuals, and as you mentioned, Preble Rish and our county staff from Public Works have all worked hard to make this come together. So thank you for the opportunity to be a part of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion curious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is to request to enter in an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Earlier this year, we went out for an RFP for health insurance for county employees. This is countywide for all the constitutionalists as well. The, our consultant received two proposals for this, and they ranked those two proposals, and the highest-ranked one was Blue Cross Blue Shield. The committee that is made up of representatives of all the constitutional officers also met and looked over the proposals and discussed it, and their unanimous proposal was to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to go with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I will say that our consultant is also able to negotiate a rate hold so there'll be no increase in health insurance for the employees this year.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
I got a comment, if I didn't get it in for where this happened.
Is there anybody from Blue Cross Blue Shield in the audience?
Guess not. Just for the record, I have some concerns about what Blue Cross and Blue Shield has done as far as dealing with the present HMO that they have with the county, and it's, and I don't know who else, there's about 10 of us in the county that has an HMO with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I just found out where I needed to see an orthopedic, that they were, none of them, as they listed in their booklet and website, will even accept our HMO in the area. And I want to make sure, Ms. Nan, I see you out there, and Todd and Anna, whenever time comes, to find out if they've actually negotiated these contracts like they purported to be whenever we signed up back a year ago for this particular policy. Thank you.
And I guess that was the question I was going to ask, is there any change, will our, will our employees see any change in any way?
The only change is we are not going to offer the HMO plan. There was a lot of complaints with that plan, there was only 10 employees on that, that one. So those 10 people will have to migrate to a different plan.
Which I have no problem doing, I just hope I don't break a leg between now and then, because I'll have to set it myself.
I'll hold it for you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is, I'm coming asking for the Board's direction on our, our former or current, however you look at it, county attorney, Ms. Toni Craig. I passed out a copy of her employment agreement to all of you this morning, and...
You skipped one.
Did I skip one?
What about Claire?
Oh, I'm sorry. Item D. All right, I'll come back to that one.
Thought you was just going back to that one.
The next item would be then to, a Board to approve us entering into a contract with Clary Glenn Funeral Home for Indigent Unclaimed Burial Services. We sent out an RF, or a request for quotes on that, and they've responded with a cost of $895 for that for the county, and I'd request that you approve that.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye.
And I'd like to comment, as being a former member of that profession, and I see what they're doing it for, I want to thank them because they are doing, they're really helping the county out, so I want to thank them for doing that.
Thank you, Joel.
Oh, thank you, Joel. Now the county attorney.
Okay, back to the county attorney. I handed out the employment agreement, and on page 2 of that agreement under C3, there is a paragraph there that, that covers if, if the person is, has the inability to properly discharge the responsibilities of the office. Ms. Craig has been out on sick leave since December 19th of last year. She has been through FMLA, used that all up, and is now, has an application in for long-term disability. Her continued employment would not be affected by her being able to get on long-term disability, she'd still be eligible for that. So my recommendation would be that, that we sever the employment of Ms. Craig so that we can move forward on getting a, a new county attorney for Walton County.
Wow.
Any questions?
I'm so moved, with, with sadness, I am, I'm sorry, because I think she was very good at her job, but, but we have to move forward.
Second. Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is public hearings. First public hearing is a resolution to amending the budget to move $368,627 from the solid waste landfill fund reserved to the Mossy Head Industrial Park improvements, capital project fund. And this is a, a public hearing, so it will need to be opened.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak? Seeing none, need to close.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
We got to vote first.
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
We have to vote in this public hearing.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
They need to close.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is also a public hearing, is to approve a resolution amending the budget in the Section 8 Housing Fund to bring forward reserves into the voucher rents expense line item for this current year.
Motion open the public hearing.
Have a motion second to open the public hearing, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, Mr. Baker is in the audience and could answer those.
Anyone like to speak? Seeing none? Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion curious.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to second to close public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Mr. Chairman, the next one is a continued public hearing, and the, you've already closed the public comment portion of that, but it is to approve the amended and restated final assessment resolution for fire rescue services, and you would need to open this, this public hearing back up.
Motion to reopen the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion second to open, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we, we received a chart from GSG during the week that gave different options of everything from the existing $25 at $5 increments up to $95, what the impacts would be from the standpoint of revenue to the county and, and everything else. And I know that at the previous two sessions for this public hearing, there's been a lot of, lot of give and take on both sides of the issue. From, from my standpoint, and based upon, there's something I have on the agenda later on with regards to Freeport Fire, I would like to suggest that we go with the $75 residential rate and 7 cents per acre on contiguous land for, I guess it's on all land, 7 cents an acre, as the established rate for the... as the established rate for the coming year. That's my motion.
Second.
Are we going, we're going, is, and go do the whole, all the land and all combined together?
Do I need to read them all? Okay, it's, it's 12 cents for commercial square foot, one cent industrial warehouse, 12 cents for institutional, and seven cents for the land per acre. That would be the entirety of the motion.
And just for clarification, the motion would be to approve the resolution as presented with those rates in plugged in.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
Do we take comments before or after we vote?
Yeah, I'd like to just, I just wanted to say something. You know, we got this, we got this letter from Chief Coley, Walton County Emergency Response Division Fire. I just want to thank the fire departments all over Walton County, both volunteer and county. And this gives a pretty good breakdown of what it costs for all this extensive equipment to fight fires. And also says that they do sometimes are the first one on the scene in these, in these forest fires. I think he says he's the first response entity to any outside fire. 90% of the fires that occur outside are extinguished before the arrival of forestry by the employees and volunteers of Walton County. So, and then he goes on to, to give more statistics. I just want to thank them. I know that they've been kind of disparaged in this, in this forum. And I just, I want to thank them and tell them how much we appreciate them and that they're risking their lives out there to fight these fires. And as we've seen, a lot of firefighters actually don't make it through, through some fires. So I just want to thank Brian Coley for putting this together and all the other firefighters in Walton County that I think deserve an applause because of the great job that they do. That's really all I have.
I'll echo that sentiment. I, you want to go next?
I just, I need to ask a question of Chief. Chief, could you come up, please? Chief, looking at the Manning data that you have here, Station 12, I guess it is, there's no firefighting rigs out there?
That is correct. Five and 12 do not have firefighting rigs in them. Those are, that's an EMS station in Freeport.
So if there's a fire in Choctaw, Villatasta, they have to respond from where? Seminole, Locleus County, or from Freeport?
No, sir, those ambulances do respond to fires. There is bunker gear. Those are, those are state certified firefighters on those ambulances.
I understand that, Chief, but what about, there's no tanker, there's nothing that carries water, is it?
Now, Freeport does have firefighters and they, and they do respond.
I understand that.
I see what you're saying.
You're saying we're out there 18 miles away from Freeport?
Yes.
And there's no tanker, no fire truck, we got an ambulance, that's great.
You are correct.
So how do we?
Now, there's a tanker and an engine in Villatasta, in Tri Village.
In Choctaw, so they can actually pull one of them out there and fight it?
Yes, sir, there, there are paid firefighters in Tri Village and they respond.
So there is a tanker there?
Yes, sir.
Well, your data sheet shows there isn't.
That's my mistake, I apologize for that.
That's the reason I ask, because it shows nothing other than an ambulance out there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That's Freeport.
Freeport is the defuniac.
Now, Station 4 is, is the defuniac station.
Station 4 is the defuniac, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And what's Station 10?
That's Tri Village.
10?
Yes. Okay, five and 12 are in Freeport. Those are two ambulances that are stationed in, in Freeport at the EMS station. Station 10?
I don't have a 10 on here.
I don't have an 11 or 12.
We got stations, it says stations over here, and then what's his 1, 2, 3, 4, and all that other stuff beside it?
That's number...
I got you.
You don't have a 9.
Okay. Yeah, the numbers are confusing with the numerical...
Our, our numbers don't run concurrent. Our, our numbers for our stations are 1, 2, 3, 4.
Okay, so we can disregard the first column, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
That was just numbering.
That's just numbering. And our stations are numbered by the actual number of the station. There are, there are volunteer stations and paid stations in the mix also. Defuniac Fire Station 4, Liberty Fire Station 7.
Okay.
But Station 12, which is Tri Village?
No, sir, 10 is Tri Village.
10 is Tri Village. They have an engine and they have a tanker.
That's, that's my mistake, I'll clear that.
I may, I'm going by your numbers.
Yes, sir.
And it shows one ambulance or an ambulance, and now you're saying there is a tanker there?
There, at Station 10, in Tri Village, there's an engine and a tanker.
White 10.
10, according to the data I got, was Red Bay.
No.
No?
It's, it's, it's my fault, I'll take the blame for it, and I'll correct it.
Apparently what I was provided is the locations of each one of these is different than what I've got here, so...
Okay.
I, I won't comment any further, but I can't figure it out. I need some corrected data, but I'll get to you.
I, I do want to make a couple of comments. And, and the public hearings that we have held, the one in the south end and the one up here, it is obvious that we need to assess our, our fire department where it is now. I remember, I don't even think I was on the board back when the decision was made to go to an all paid, but it was supposed to be phased in like over 10 years. And we kind of jumped the gun and went, went fast. I think it's time for us to assess, do we need this many stations north of the bay? Can we do them, can we go back to part volunteers, which will cut the cost? Because we're going to need to cut the cost, unfortunately, you know. We cannot, and the $75 is a good start, but it has been shown we can't run all these the way we're running them now with, with $75. So I think we need to assess each one of our stations, how often are they used? Can we perhaps, you know, shut, say, one down at a time, put one paid person up there, and let them recruit volunteers and train them? You know, I think that's an option. We need to look at every option. But we're going to have to do something. And the last meeting we had up here, I heard overwhelmingly, a lot of people don't want fire service. Well, I don't think any of us want it until our house starts burning. And then I'll be, you know, so I would suggest with this good start we have that, that we start today, tomorrow, in assessing every station we have. Is it needed? Can we, you know, equip volunteers and train them? And I know that the training for volunteers is more rigorous than it used to be. But we need to get young people excited about volunteering in this county again and volunteering for fire service, and look at really reducing the budget for next year.
Percentage would that, would that? Right, no, I mean, what percentage of the total cost is, is that? 771?
19.75.
19, okay, so, so it's 19.7. So it's, it's $772,000 out of $4 million total. So that's about 20% is paid by the MSBU fees. Okay, that's, that's...
And I think we need to look at reducing that, you know, next year by looking at what we have and how we can better utilize it.
Well, there's, there's such a large mass of land we have north of the bay, that it's going to be hard to provide the service that I would say to other, say, South Walton, because it's just a huge mass of land. And you have to have stations so close together to provide a service. But there's, I don't see us ever getting to that point, not that the rates were going. And when you've got a station and it's 15 miles away, time the call comes in, a 911, it gets called to the station, it, the house is pretty well, it's pretty well getting on its way to being burnt down. And I understand that, and we, we see that. One just burnt down across the state line this past weekend from lightning. And they was there in about 20 minutes, but it was gone. So, you know, it's just hard to, it's going to be hard to provide that service with the funds we have. And, and I've spoke out several times, I'm, I'm still opposed to the land, putting a tax on the land when the Division of Forestry were paying them to do that. I think we need to step back and look at our fire service and determine, you know, what do we want and what we, the needs are, and how can we cut the cost of it and still provide that service? I don't know if we could do that with volunteers, it's possible. You look at Liberty and Argyle, you know, they still provide a service. And you have no complaints out of those areas at the service they provide. So, you know, we need to take a hard look at how we can provide that fire service to these outlying areas at a cheaper cost and still provide the same level of service we provide now.
Well, I'm not going to deny that we definitely need to cut costs. That's, that's one of our priority reasons for being in place right now. Along with the fire side of this, we also have to take into consideration that we have an EMS side. And the travel distances are just as great for the ambulances as they are for the, for the fire trucks. And right now, we have ALS personnel on these outlying engines. My, my only fear and grave concern is if we cut back too much, we run the risk of removing those ALS protection, that level of protection from an, from an outlying area. Now, the, the districts like Liberty and Argyle don't have to worry about the ALS protection because they, they get that service from us right now. So there's no, there's no major time lag. But when you start talking about gasking, or you start talking about Tri Village, you're talking about a pretty good, pretty good pedal.
And that's why we have, you know, let's say six months or more to, to assess everything and see what we can do and, and can't do, you know. And, and one thing, Kenneth, I wanted, and I've heard that, you know, by the time they get there, the house burns down. But as, as important as trying to save the house, it's trying to save your neighbor's house. You know, a lot of times the house will catch on fire, and maybe they can't get there in time, but they can get there in time to save the neighbor's house or the neighbor's, you know. So it's just not that one house that's on fire, it's the, and if you're in a neighborhood, it's the neighborhood, you know.
We experienced that this weekend.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you were inside a major city, we'll use the defuniac, for example. I mean, we've got fire hydrants just about on every street within the city limits, the fire department's centrally located, and normally they can respond in a reasonable amount of time. And based upon that type of upgrades, sewer, I mean, not sewer, but hydrants, fire stations in close proximity to the area and the town, your ISO rating will be reduced, which would help offset some of the taxes that would be assessed because your ISO would make it up in your homeowners. We, in my opinion, are never going to get to that point. The county is too big and spread out that if we would have to have probably a firehouse full time within a five mile radius of every place in this county, we'd probably end up having to build 30 of them just to, to accommodate that. That might be an exaggeration, Chief, I seen you roll your eyes. But I mean...
I'm just trying to mention 30 fire stations.
That's, that's the concern that I'm sure a lot of the people have. We can't afford to go out and build all them to help maybe reduce on their ISO. But we've got to do something, and I agree with Ms. Commander here in that we need to do a full assessment and see if there's some areas that need to be shifted. Maybe we need to shift the station one way, the other, we might need to cut back. I mean, some of these things that you provided here, there's only one person there.
Yes.
So I think it would behoove you and Mr. Bearden, yeah, Mr. Bearden, to do an assessment and find, and come back to this board to let us know what you found out as far as the type of protection.
Yes, sir.
That, that doesn't negate the fact that, that we need to bump up the fees.
Well, I know it's on the table, I think, right now, $75.
Yeah. Because we, we just, we just paid $50,000 for a, for a study and $30,000 for mail out. So that's $80,000 to determine that, and according to Chief Coley, that, you know, this is done through state and national guidelines that, you know, are required. So it's not like we just hired somebody and they came up with these numbers.
Understood.
So I, I'm just saying that we can, we can assess everything. We can assess everything absent anything else. I mean, we can always assess what we've got. But I think that to make up this in our budget and this year, the $75 is, is a reasonable amount, I think, for this kind of protection. It's only 20% of the, of the budget.
For council, seven cent per acre, we have got to charge. I kind of agree with Kenneth to respect it, not have it on the table, but if the law or courts or whatever is mandating it...
Yes, sir, if you're going to have an MSBU under current case law, you have to assess for every type of land and structure that you respond to fires to. You don't have any choice. Now, the seven cent per acre is essentially recovering the cost of what we pay to the Division of Forestry. That's a legally defensible position because you're recovering actual costs.
And I, and I do agree with the seven cents an acre because it is, we're, we're just charging what we're having to pay. You know? And, and of course, I only own one acre of land, so, and my house sits on it. But I feel like that that's, you know, that's reasonable.
Well, I kind of feel that I, I just don't know if I can go to the 75. I think we're trying to go too far too quick as far as what that's originally been paid. And I know we got a motion on table, so I'll hold off. But I'm, I have a little concern about that. I've had numerous calls and emails and what have you from those that are on fixed incomes. And I'm, and I know we have a, a procedure in place to protect those or try to help those that are, don't have the funds coming in, they're on fixed assets. But it's something that has been going on for years, it never was addressed. It's, it's headed up right here with this new board. So I'm going to hold in abeyance right now, my, what I think the rate should be.
And, and you say, and you know, a lot of people say that, we have a lot of people on fixed income. There are a lot of people on fixed income in Freeport, Argyle, Liberty, Defuniac. Believe it or not, there's actually some people in South Walton on fixed incomes. So, you know, there are people everywhere on fixed incomes. And so I think to, you know, to make it more equitable for those people that are on fixed income, because they're picking up the difference. And so that is why I am in favor of the $75, that's only $50 more a year. And if they are on a fixed income and if they do have an issue, of course, we will help them. I mean, we'll, we'll find out a way to help them. But, but I think to make it equitable after 15 years is, is really just a minor, minor. Because as we said, people spend $50 on coffee, tea, and beer, wine, whatever else a year.
Commissioner, I, I understand what you're saying. My other concern is whether or not Argyle and Liberty and the two cities decide to maybe raise their MSBU up to be in line with what it is instead of us having to raise ours and then turn around and support them with a, a budget like we have been for, I guess, as long as it's been around.
And I think, and I think that's, that's going to, you know, we're going to see what they're going to, we're going to see what they're going to do. But I think that, that, you know, they're going to have to come to the table as well. But, you know, remember, everybody's adult earned taxes are, are paying the difference.
I think during the budget workshop, the board took the, the stance that we were going to stop the stipends to those other areas that in order to allow Liberty and Argyle to determine what they want to do, what their needs are, we would give them one extra year of this, but that we were going to stop the, the stipends. And of course, part of that deals with, with later on, and we talk about Freeport. But I mean, for right now, the issue is the assessment. And, I mean, you know, you've gotten emails, I've gotten emails in both directions. And some people want to go higher than that. And I just think that we're trying to, to do what we had, what the board had said previously is we want to move in the right direction toward making the adjustments, towards recognizing that for so many years, costs increased and never were passed on. And we're making the first step in the direction of trying to get that handled. And, and the EMS costs are a different issue, which we need to address later on, possibly the RFP, but that's not part of what we've got here. So I, I think that, you know, we, we first... So, I, I think that, you know, we, we first started out at ninety-five and, and we've backed down to seventy-five. I don't think it's unreasonable, and, and that's why I put it out there.
Yeah. And seven cents per acre is, I mean, you know, a hundred acres is what, seven dollars? A thousand acres is what, seventy dollars? I mean, I mean, you know, if you've got a thousand acres.
Lucky you are.
You know, yeah, you're very blessed and you have, you know, a thousand acres. If, if you can't afford it, we'll work with you. But, you know, we, yeah, we all talked about this in the workshops and we all made the decision that we were gonna, to me, this is part and parcel of, of doing the fire review, and this is just the first step. The next step we go is, you know, we look, we look at everything, the expenses, but this is the first step, I think, in this whole process. So, I thi, I think that if you, if you don't make it more equitable, I think that, that it's, it's really not fair to a vast majority of the people in the county and.
Well, we can talk about it being, you know, it should have been done years ago and it probably should have, but the fact of the matter is, this can's been kicked down the hill and we're at the bottom of the hill. And, and when people discuss what we're doing to them, I want people to keep in mind, you know, my fire assessment will go up to seventy-five dollars, too. I'm a single woman, I pay my own mortgage, I pay my own bills, so seventy-five dollars will also come out of my pocket and, and most of the people sitting up here. We're doing it because we have to or discontinue fire service altogether. We don't, you know, we've got to do something and, and the can's here and it's time we, we do what's right. I call for the motion. A question.
Call for a motion.
I call for the question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Tell us the vote.
Three to two.
Who's the name?
Nay, you mean.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Commissioners. I have two items. The first is the contract with Neighbors Gibling to do the land use attorney work. The contract is for a hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour and they've agreed not to charge us for travel back and forth, which I thought was a nice concession on their part, so I'd ask approval of the contract.
It's a pretty good price, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am, that's a very low rate.
I thought it was pretty, a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
The second item, Commissioners, is I have before you the report from the Costangie Law Firm on Mr. Baker's hostile workplace complaint against two of our supervising employees. The report is before you for consideration and approval. Actually, what I'm asking you to approve is there is a set of recommendations for pers, for policy changes, and I'm asking the board to approve the report and request or direct, direct the legal office to undergo, or undergo changing those, those policies to the point where we can, we can comply with the recommendation.
Kenneth, ask them to be quiet. I'm sorry.
This, this come to order. Hey, we can give them a minute to clear.
Yeah, Mark, because I, I didn't understand a word you said.
That's okay. The second item is, we have received a report from Costangie Brooks on the hostile workplace environment complaint that was made by Mr. Baker. I'm asking you to review and accept the report as, as presented. There, at the last, in the last paragraph of the report, there's a couple of recommendations regarding policies. As part of your approval, I'm asking that you direct legal to adopt or to draft those policies with, with administration to present to you. And frankly, we do not have that kind of policy and we do need to have it, have it done. Oh, also, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Baker's office has been moved to a different department, and I, I think that's going to remain as, as it's, as it was. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've, we've moved that department to OMB. It's, it's that type of an operation that has a lot of finances dealing through it, so OMB is a good fit for that. We had put them there temporarily and we'd like to make that change permanent.
I think that's the best, that's where it should have been all along.
Any motion to approve the report?
Prove the report and direct legal to draft the policies as recommended by the report.
I don't mind making the motion, but I, I, there's a comment in here I want to maybe direct staff or ask to be staff to do something.
I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
To approve recommendations?
With recommendations and, and draft.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second. A motion second, all those in favor?
Wait, he wants to comment.
Oh, you want to make a comment?
Well, yeah, I, I was reading through this report here, then Mr. Baker apparently has made it known that he would, he maybe need to go out and recommend to HUD that Walton County and Dufuniac be consolidated. I've never fully understood why we had two of them, one in the city and one for the county. However, based upon apparently his desire at the time, I would ask that we direct staff to check with HUD in Jacksonville and see what it would take and what'd be the process to make that consolidation happen.
That good? Okay. Got a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
That all? Mr. Bagby? Or, okay, whomever?
As, as Mr. Bagby's coming forward, I have a comment about him.
Oh, God.
Stand up, Mr. Bagby. You did a fantastic job last night. You know, as most of you know, we had a hearing on the sports complex last night, our first of many public hearings on it, and I want to commend him, Larry, too, but, yeah, well, throw Larry in there. But, Mr. Bagby, you did an outstanding job and I want to thank you for it.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Walton County currently leases four tracts of lands from the Bureau of Land Management. They're all beach accesses, Phillips Inlet, Dune Allen, Walton Dunes, and One Sea Grove. Walton County has been recognized by the Bureau as a continual steward of these four public accesses for the past eighteen years. The Bureau of Land Management has offered patenting these tracts over to Walton County that, and in addition, it would not change the current management plan for those lands. By patenting the four tracts, it'll reduce the, the compliance schedule or checks from once every year to once every five years. In a sense, it's taking the land off of their books and putting it onto our books for no cost, and then the current management plan would still remain in effect. So, we would continue to manage those parks as we've always managed them over the past eighteen years.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we got Mr. Bagby coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Jim Bagby, TDC Executive Director. In keeping with the theory of increasing land, I, I know we sent you the announcement last week, but I wanted to make sure everybody knew that the Army Corps of Engineers has approved the beach nourishment request, and it is now going for congressional approval and funding. So, Mr. Pickle will be down here to brief in the middle of August and let you know exactly where we are in that process. And then the only other update I wanted to let you know is we, we are issuing a request for nominees for the eleventh awarding of the Van Ness Butler Award Supporting Tourism in Walton County. And pending any further questions, that's all we have today.
Any questions?
We got a quick question on the Army Corps issue.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a speculation yet as to which fiscal year, which federal fiscal year we might be seeing the dollars?
Well, we hope it'll be next federal fiscal year, but that depends on a lot of factors, sequestration and, and what they do with their budget. It's possible it would be next year. If you asked me to pin a date, I would say it would probably be the following fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay. That's all, Mr. Bagby. Ron Mosley?
I'm Ron Mosley. I am employed by Sacred Heart Hospital in Pensacola. Here on behalf of Air Methods Corporation requesting the CLPCN for air ALS services in Walton County be renewed.
Any questions?
Under the same terms?
Same terms.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you for your excellent service. I know that when you need to be airlifted, they're there.
Thank you. And I think the agreement that we came in eleven has actually helped the citizens of Walton County considerably on the cost side.
And Commissioners, just so you know, this is approving a certificate of need for them to provide the service, so we're, we're good legally where we are.
Have a motion second.
Yeah.
Yeah, got a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Meadows?
Yes, I would like to, first of all, recognize the guys from Public Works. You guys, Wilmer, you guys stand up. I, I just, I want to recognize you guys and thank you for, you know, we've had a lot of flooding all throughout the county, and these guys have, and, and the road crews, I know District Five Road Crew has been work, they worked Fourth of July weekend and I think two or three weekends after that, solid to address our flooding issues. And I just, I want to say, we really appreciate it and thank you publicly for doing that. And I, I just, I wanted to throw out something that, you know, I know that a couple of times someone said, well, we couldn't do that because, you know, we would need a DEP permit and that would take some time. Is there, is there a way that we can get emergency permits in hand in advance and then so we could do some of that work, just go out and, and do that kind of work?
Okay, I've got Scott Scare, Scare, where we, he'll come up, he could probably answer your permitting.
Okay.
And I did talk to Regional Utility, I talked to Ms. Pilcher.
Okay.
She's in the same boat we are, is when it comes to rain, they so tied up with their pumping, but she does, she tries to keep one extra pump available.
Okay.
But she says she couldn't get no agreement with us or.
Oh, really? Yeah, because that's one of the things we talked about was, was getting a pump, you know, so that some of the stuff could be pumped out quickly and that Regional had a pump, and Wilmer was going to meet with Regional and discuss that, but that's not going to work out. That's not going to work out.
We could use the pump if they do not have it tied up, but it's.
So, we've kind of hit, we've kind of hit and miss.
How much is a pump?
Well, we've actually got one of the big pumps that was at the lake and one of the coastal doom lakes pumping during the oil spill.
Did we just have one pump or did we get more than one?
We just got one. I think the other ones was leased, Commissioner. But we probably will be coming back seeking permission to trade that thing, to get one that we can use. It's just too big. You've got to have equipment with it to set it up. It's not one you can just pull there and throw your hose out. It's a big pump.
That's what we need.
While you're there, Wilmer, again, thanks to Public Works. I know the entire county was impacted by the rains. We still suffer them, at least on the east side, in Ms. Meadows' district down there yesterday. But again, I know the guys put in, and the ladies put in a lot of time and effort over the last few weeks, working through their weekends, days off, and trying to get them up, and then when we about get them up, it rains again. But anyway, I appreciate their efforts and their dedication, and if you will pass that on to them.
I will, sir. We got some great people. We do.
If I might, I'd like to add to Major Preston and the Sheriff's Office staff, thank you too, because it was a joint effort, it wasn't just Public Works.
It was.
We thank you very much for the service you gave the county.
And I'm sure the fire department was in the mix somewhere.
Well, everybody, I'm sure was.
Yeah, all the emergency management.
I didn't want to slight you back there, Major, but.
Yeah, all the manag, emergency management folks and all, all those folks.
Next year, we can prepare for a drought, you know?
I guess, yeah.
It's been something else.
Good morning, Commissioners. To answer your question, Commissioner Meadows, we spoke with DEP and the, and the Water Management Districts. We haven't evaluated getting preliminary authorizations before a flood or something, but we do have a, we have worked with them and coordinated some emergency permits or emerg, emergency authorizations.
Yeah.
The only thing they're going to ask of our staff is to, you know, provide a scope of work, what we'd want to do, evaluate the area where, if, for example, if we wanted to pump water somewhere else to make sure we're not going to cause a problem to downstream property owners. But there are some emergency permits, emergency authorizations, and they said they would expedite them.
Okay, that would be good. That'd be good.
And as far as the, the one on the beach, Walton Magnolia.
Yeah.
They, if, if we did pursue pumping that water onto the beach, they could possibly issue us a field permit. One of the issues we had with that one was there were the private property owners on the water all the way to the Gulf of Mexico.
Okay.
And they wanted us to create a sump area.
Okay.
See where the mean high water, or land where the mean high water line. And so, we were, there were some private property issues on that one.
I see. Okay.
Okay. Any other question? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Commander?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Enfield?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Previously, when we had the budget workshops, we had talked about the, the possibility of establishing fire stations east and west of Freeport or, or some work in, in between that, maybe working with the city of Freeport. Based upon the fact that we passed a seventy-five dollar per residence fee, I would like permission to direct staff to work with the City of Freeport Council to determine if we can indeed move towards putting a, a station east of Freeport, west of Freeport, staffing it. Now, in doing that, whether we're going to immediately be able to do the Capitol Outlay for a building or whether we've got to do like pole barns and, and a trailer, I'd like staff to come back with that. But I'd also like to, to ensure that if it impacts existing Freeport firefighters, that those firefighters that would be impacted would be given first opportunity at whatever new jobs are created, assuming that they would be willing to go through the certification process. So, I guess my motion is, at this point in time, is to direct staff to work with the City of Freeport for inclusion in this coming budget year, because we have the money available, to establish an east of Freeport, west of Freeport station and cover those areas that previously in the county that had been covered by the City of Freeport. And at the conclusion, if there's a modification, perhaps, perhaps even a tweaking of that with the City of Freeport, we can then work with Freeport to give the best possible coverage to Freeport, especially the areas east of the city as you go out towards Windswept and that, in order to provide the fire service needed there.
Would we need a motion to, to do that?
Staff direction.
Just to give staff direction.
I, I think we need to give staff direction, but staff needs to come back within the current fiscal year so that by September.
But we need to do a comprehensive look at the whole North County.
I understand that.
And build into this system where we'll know what we're doing. And, and I understand about fire protection, but we need to look at a, have a comprehensive look of what our needs are going to be.
Answer for this question by September, by the time the public hearings come.
Okay. You know, we have a new, not a totally new council in Freeport, but we have, you know, some new members. We were going to meet with the Freeport City Council on some issues. We put it off, you know, because of the election. I'd like for us to go forward with that because I think in the discussion, we, I think that, you know, we can talk to the City of Freeport about, you know, fire service and, and that sort of thing. So, I think that's one of the things that we can certainly discuss with them is how, you know, we protect everybody. But I would like to, and I'm fine with directing staff, I'm more in favor if we do put one in, put one near Bruce, you know, rather than Portland. But I think we need to work with the City of Freeport. They have a new council, a new vision, and let's meet with them, give them an opportunity.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, I'm, I think, though, that, yeah, this is an issue that needs to be addressed before we strike the budget, the final budget. So, you know, we need to go ahead and have that meeting and have staff go forward and look at this because, you know, this is a question that we've been looking at for years. So, it's, it's not like, you know, we need to assess the whole county. This is one part of that, I think.
So, in his suggestion, could we add, just getting that public meeting with Freeport as soon as possible? Thank you, DeeDee, appreciate it.
Okay. Just recognizing the deadline we've got.
Yeah, yeah.
And I understand that before the first budget meeting in September, we need to have that information available to the Commissioners so you can make a decision.
That's correct. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to pull a Ronnie Bill. I'll come back to my comment. I know it's terrible. I want to thank staff for these new books. Thank you, DeeDee, and all those that worked on it. It's much easier for me to follow, and I appreciate it. So that's it.
Commissioner Chapman, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Any public comments?
Dotting this beach breeze. I wondered on your, your vote to set the seventy-five dollar assessment for fire protection, did that vote include the hundred and fifty-dollar maximum and the other maximums that had been included in that resolution?
Yeah, I believe it's consistent with the total resolution. We just had to pick the amount-
Yeah.
Okay.
Under a hundred and fifty that we were going to go with.
Okay, the maximum is in there also then.
But that's for future years. For what we're saying, for the coming year, we chose to stay under the hundred and fifty by picking a number of seventy-five.
Yes, I understand that very well. I just wanted to be clear on what was being approved. Thank you.
Any other, any other public comments?
Alan White, I just have one question about the fire tax. I don't mind paying the seventy-five dollars at all. Don't mind paying my fair share. The seven cents per acre, does that include all acres, not including Liberty, Argyle, Freeport, and South Walton and Dufnian? Does that cover every acre in the other parts of the county? Conservation land, all of it? I was told by one person that conservation land wasn't included in the study.
Yes, indeed.
Then I was told the other night at this meeting, it was included in the study. Now, does that mean that everybody's going to pay the seven cent an acre?
Yes, sir.
That not in those districts?
Let me answer a question about conservation land. Actually, there wasn't a mission of conservation land in the original study. They went back and fixed it, but the timing was such that the folks who have conservation land, the M S B U assessment won't be in their, their bill. It will actually come in a separate bill. So they'll, those folks who have conservation land are going to get their regular ad valorem, and then a second bill for the M S B U. It, it just was an oversight. Soon as we recognized it, fixed it, and it, and all that land will be included.
But that includes every acre of land except Dufnian, Liberty, South Walton, Argyle-
Yes, sir.
And Dufnian. Is that correct?
And Freeport.
And Freeport.
And Freeport. That's correct.
But every other acre in the county is included north of the bay in that. Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Conservation land, it will be included.
Wouldn't it be north and south of the bay?
Any other, any other comments?
No?
It doesn't include government land, correct?
Yeah.
Institutional has its own rate.
I'm, Lieutenant Bird. Bill, I'd like to thank you for getting speakers where I could understand you. But I read something that I don't understand, and when you read something you don't understand, you don't understand it. I read W E C, W E C E D A. It's fining, going, expecting a hundred and sixteen million dollars in fees or fines. Do you know what I'm talking about?
No, sir.
Walton County Economic Development-
Development Alliance. Yes, sir.
Funds.
Walton County Economic Development Council. And they're going, and the paper said they were going to, uh, fine or assess a hundred and sixteen million dollars.
Don't think they've got assessment authority.
No, no, I don't.
They don't have authority.
That's what?
They didn't, the E D A doesn't have an authority to assess anything.
You, do you have a copy of the article?
You have a copy of the article, sir?
Pardon?
You have a copy of the article?
No, I didn't. I, I was in a hurry and I left it, but it was in September the thirteenth of twenty twelve, paper. Of course, I, if I need to, I can get the paper.
Daily News? Was it?
Yeah, Herald here.
Oh, the Herald?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the E D A doesn't have the authority to assess any, anything.
No.
Well, it, it also talked about salaries. Paying them salaries, and the salary was fine except two thousand dollars in debt.
Dotting, you know what he's talking about? The E D A, sir, only has one employee. Yeah, we don't, we don't know what-
The E D A only has one employee.
In other words, I was thinking that was a lot of money.
Yeah.
That's more than our total budget, isn't it?
Yeah. When did he say it was in the paper?
Well, I can, I can bring the paper next meeting here in the King.
Can y'all just get ahold of him and send something?
I've got your number, Mr. Bird. I'll call you and find out, you know, get some more information and, and find out what this means, okay? I'll call you.
Eight, three, six, four, two.
I don't think the E D A had an employee back then.
Four, two.
I have.
Yeah.
Six, zero.
Okay, I'll call you.
Scarlet may have been here.
Well, Sarah, I said I didn't understand it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't even think they had an employee, because I don't know when. Oh, she left in December. Yeah, but, yeah.
Another thing I'd like to check, how many councils and boards and so on and so forth the county pays for. What I read in the paper, we don't need that many councils and boards. You know, like I say, I don't understand.
Okay. Someone to get up, DeeDee, get up, will you? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go into the planning and development. Mr.?
Good morning, Commissioners. We have four items on the agenda this morning. Three of those are being continued. We'll take the first one first, Mr. Chairman, which is the ship contract modification. I'll ask Matt Carpenter to come out and give a brief overview of this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for Walton County Planning. What we have before you is a proposed contract modification to the contract we just signed approximately a month ago with West Florida Housing Regional Planning Council. This addendum is required because the ship allocation that we just received last week for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars comes with some legislative language that reduces the administrative fee that has historically been ten percent down to three percent for this particular program year. So what we proposed is a, an amendment to the contract that addresses that and brings the fee structure in our existing contract in line with the legislative priorities for this particular year. And this particular structure was recommended by the technical advisor to the ship program. It's what's being used statewide because of the concern about what the legislature basically did.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Do we need motions to continue all these?
He's fixing to get to it.
Yes, ma'am. The first, first, the number two on your agenda is the U S ninety-eight three thirty-one scenic corridor outdoor display ordinance. On the next, on this one end, number three, Mr. Davis received an email from some citizens who wanted more time to review this before the Planning Commission meeting, and so the Planning Commission continued these, which necessitates our need to continue these as well. But again, the first one, we're asking for it to be continued until the August thirteenth meeting at five o'clock at the South Walton Annex.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And number three, the flood plan, flood plan management ordinance, same, same issue there. Citizens wanted more time to review this before the Planning Commission meeting. And again, we're also recommending that this be ta- continued until the August thirteenth meeting at five P M. at South Walton Annex.
And Commissioners, just, just for your information, the notice that was provided was legally sufficient, but the citizens did ask for a little more time to review, and there was nothing that was so pressing that they didn't, couldn't have the time that needed to be reviewed.
And this is an all-new ordinance? Because it's all underlined?
A lot of it is new, yes, ma'am. I think it's almost all new.
Yes, 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 ma'am. The flood, the-
All new, yes, ma'am.
The flood plain ordinance, the state has a new model ordinance, and so that follows the state. Right, yes, ma'am. And so that, that will be followed in the state model ordinance.
Okay.
Number four on your agenda is the Q J items.
Wait, we got to vote.
Got to vote.
Sorry.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we're ready.
Motion carries.
Before we do the next one, I've got my recusal form in.
Go ahead, Mr. Das.
What is he?
Do we need to be sworn in, or can we just handle the documents? Okay. Mr. Chairman, the next item, number four on your agenda, is the S O A Office Building at Sandeston. The Planning Commission had some questions and some concerns they wanted to address before they felt like voting on this particular issue, so they continued this item. And so we're asking for this to be continued as well until the August thirteenth meeting at five o'clock at the South Walton Annex.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners?
Thank you.
Are there anything else on the agenda?
Second. We don't need a second.
We'll be adjourned.
You never need a second to adjourn. Oh, who's that? Oh, okay. Who's the base?
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am. It was organized.
Sandy?